Oh, holy night! The stars are brightly shining. It is the night of our dear Savior's birth. Long lay the world in sin and error pining, till He appeared and our soul felt its worth. A thrill of hope, though weary world rejoices, for yonder breaks a new and glorious morn. Fall on your knees, oh, hear the angel voices. All night divine, all night when Christ was born. All night divine, all night, all night divine. Happy holidays. Merry Christmas. Thank you, thank you.
And Merry Christmas. So glad to have everyone here and I don't see any elected officials to recognize, staying close to this mic. But we're glad to have all of you and appreciate your participating in county government today. If the Marshal, Trevor, you got the list for me? Thank you. And it is a great privilege to have the Pastor of Pickens Mill Baptist Church, Pastor Johnny Nix here with us today, who will lead us in our invocation and the pledge to the flag. Johnny, thanks for being here.
Let's bow for prayer. Dear Father, as we come to you today, we thank you for your loving kindness and your tender mercy. We thank you for the blessings on our great county and we pray for continued blessings to come. Dear Father, we pray that you would help us to humble ourselves, to pray and seek your face and turn from our wicked ways. You said you would forgive our sin and you would heal our land. We are in desperate need of your healing in this hour. We pray, dear Father, that you will use this time of year to help us to reflect upon your goodness in sending Jesus, God's Son, to us for our Savior. And dear Father, I pray your blessings over this meeting today. Dear Father, may the decisions made today benefit our county in the greatest ways and dear Father, may you give our commissioners wisdom and understanding concerning the decisions that will be made today. We ask it in Jesus' name and for His sake we pray. Amen. If you will, direct your attention toward the flag of the United States of America. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much Pastor Nix. And if I didn't say it, officially call the meeting to order, the December 12th, a pre-Christmas meeting of the Pauling County Board of Commissioners. I would like to say that the minutes for the November 14th meeting are available for your request, both for the work session and for the voting meeting itself. Under announcements this morning, one going back to last Friday on the 8th of December, where the Marietta Journal on the front page said, "A little bit of snow is expected, one half to one inch accumulation is expected." So they were correct, right? We got one half to one inch. So it wasn't an incorrect statement at all. The Positively Pauling segment this morning is on an event that happened here on this property a couple of weeks ago. It's the Pauling Christmas in the Courtyard. It was a great success and let's watch it together.
We'd like to thank Greystone Power and the Chamber and the county for getting together and putting this all on and all of our sponsors and all of you for being here. And of course, we have all of our wonderful vendors out there. Please go buy, shop, enjoy. We are all about shopping local. We have about 30 vendors represented in these things.
He sprang to his sleigh, to his team he gave a whistle, and away they flew like the down of a thistle. But I heard him exclaim as he drove out aside, "Happy Christmas to all and to all a good night." The end.
Merry Christmas to everybody. Couple of weeks I'll be at your house, I guess. All the kids need to remember to go to sleep early Christmas Eve because you can't be awake when I get there.
[singing] All the years, all the years we'll always be together in the face of love. Hang a shining star upon the highest bough. And how would you spell a merry little Christmas?
Thank you, Mr. Jeff Harkins, for putting that together and also putting together the pictures while Jennifer Nettles was singing there in the first part. Jeff is our new Public Information Manager and he's doing a great job. The Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Pauling County Water Systems staff for the food drive that they put on for Helping Hands. The food drive was organized by Administrative Assistant Dee Hunter and the captains who helped and encouraged participation were Robin Whitley from meter reading, Christine Santinil from customer service, and Russell Kelly from treatment service, and Ms. Lori Ashmore. I'm inviting you to say some more about it if you'd like to, Lori.
The There we go. Pauling Water System had its first annual food drive before Thanksgiving and I wanted to share with you some of what we did. We initially put out the call and to help the Helping Hands before the holiday season. So from October 9th to November 10th, we collected food and, you know, we enticed people with a surprise reward for the winner. We had a little twist. Our department is a large department and we tried to divide the department into groups of folks, so about equal sized teams. And then we had a surprise for the group that collected the most items and that was Team Three, who we had a pizza lunch for. Each of the teams decorated a can that they had in their[612.04][612.04][laughing] in their... Some of them were very seasonal and some not. Some were just fun. Here's the delivery that we made to Helping Hands in November. A little bit of the levity after the food drive when Team Three, and that was the team located in this building, had lunch together. We collected over 620 pounds of food for the food pantry.[654.04][654.04][applause] When I went and I wanted to know how much that was, if we just divided it by employees, and that was almost eight pounds of food collected per employee. I continue to be so proud to work with this group of folks and to experience their warmth and generosity and so we wanted to share that with you today.
The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Eileen Culberson, who's the Animal Control Facilities Manager with the Marshals Bureau. And Mr. Trevor Hess is going to further tell us about this.
Major LaHome could not be here today unfortunately. She had a procedure, so I will be telling Eileen how much we love and thank her about it. These are in the major's words. She was so kind to write me a speech, but she wrote it as if she was here, so just imagine it's the major and not me.[730.12][730.12][laughter] That'll be interesting.
It will be.
Yeah. So she said, "Good morning, I'm sorry I couldn't be here for this special moment." With that said, Eileen Culberson, she's up front. She's had the pleasure of working very closely with Eileen for almost a decade now and we have been through some extremely tough times and rewarding times and have succeeded together through all of those. Eileen's positive attitude and contagious smile is a supervisor's dream and I honestly can't say one negative thing about her in all the years that we've worked together and known each other. Well, except for the one time I made her get out of my office after she'd been sprayed by a cat.[775.07][775.07][laughter] And she can tell you that was pretty bad. I have to tell you another recent story about Eileen that will easily sum up her personality and heart. Recently, we had been in court and when we left, Eileen had called me to tell me that somebody had locked their dog in the car. She was very upset that the dog had no water and was alone. And I told her it was clearly cool outside and I doubted that the dog was in any trouble. But then again, she's the expert in that area and not me. So Eileen agreed that she just wanted to check on the animal and stick around and talk to the owner and educate them on what could happen if it had been hot outside or different dangerous scenarios. She was clearly concerned, but as usual, she was all about educating that individual. About 10 minutes later, she called me back and told me that it had been an elderly man who stated that at times he forgot how to get home, but his dog would bark if he missed the turn. He also proceeded to tell Eileen that he came up here to pay his water bill, but had come up a little short on money. So what does Eileen do? She went ahead and paid the man's water bill. As we talked about it later, we agreed that God had worked in funny ways and puts all of us in the right places at the right time. And she feels that Eileen definitely is in the right place and has been for several years. She's truly a ray of sunshine and she has a way of taking any bad situation and making it into something positive. She's very useful in her skills and her line of work. And this is straight from the major right here because you know I'm not Mr. Warm and Fuzzy.[881.01][881.01][laughter] So, "Eileen, you will never know how much you have taught me and how often I look up to you for who you are inside. You're more than a rewarding of this reward and not only for your attitude and outlook on everything in life, but mostly your work ethic, knowledge and skills. You're truly a blessing to Pauling County, but mostly the thousands of animals that you have cared for and saved during your time with us." So congratulations on your accomplishments at this time and this award and it is well deserved.
And now, the Board of Commissioners would like to present a proclamation to Dr. Catherine Melton and the staff at Shepherd's Rest Women's Shelter in honor of 20 years of service to Pauling County. and while Dr. Melton is coming up and also a special lady in our family's life, Ms. Darmita Cox, who's here with her son, while she's coming up to say something, I'm going to go on and read the proclamation here. And then we'll let Darmita speak. Whereas Shepherd's Rest Ministries Incorporated was founded by Catherine D. Melton, Ph.D., who serves as founding president and executive director. In the early 1990s, Catherine provided domestic counseling services throughout Pauling County. And whereas, on December 26th, 1997, Shepherd's Rest Ministries Incorporated opened its doors as the only shelter in the county to serve victims of domestic violence. Since that day, over 3,000 women and children have been served. Whereas, not only does Shepherd's Rest Ministries Incorporated provide emergency and transitional housing, a 24-hour crisis line, food, clothing, emergency transportation, and resource referrals, it also offers legal advocacy to victims of family violence, which has assisted over 5,000 individuals since the program began in 2002. And whereas it also provides a weekly women's enrichment therapy group for women in crisis throughout the community, this group has had a profound impact and has empowered thousands of women as they learn about domestic violence and coping mechanisms. And whereas, we give honor for the deep and abiding commitment to those who in faith began this work and to those who continue this work. It is a privilege to be able to extend the expression of our esteem and best wishes to Shepherd's Rest Ministries Incorporated as they celebrate their 20-year anniversary on December 26th of 2017. Therefore, I, David L. Carmichael, Chairman of the Pauling County Board of Commissioners, along with friends, family, and residents of Pauling County, Georgia, applaud their efforts and thank Shepherd's Rest Ministry Incorporated for contributions to the community
God bless all of you. What a blessing it is for me to be here and what a privilege it is, I'm sorry, to just Again, God bless all of you. What a blessing it is for me to be here and what a privilege it is to just be alive. I thank God for this opportunity to stand before you and to give honor where honor is due. I moved to Dallas 18 years ago. Prior to moving here, I lived in Atlanta. In 1993, I experienced what no one should ever have to witness in their lifetime. I witnessed the death of both my mother and my twin sister. On Thanksgiving Day, my sister's boyfriend walked up to our car as we were getting ready to leave to go to my grandmother's house for Thanksgiving dinner. He pulled out a gun and immediately started shooting into our car. As a result of that shooting, both my mother and my twin sister was killed. After taking their lives, this young man, at the age of 16, then turned the gun on himself and killed himself. On a day when most families come together, it was the day my family was torn apart. The domestic violence that I witnessed that day was unreal. A couple of years went by and at the age of 18, I got married to a man who I thought was the perfect man. Needless to say, he wasn't. He was very abusive. Over time, he began to drink and drink a lot. He did. He verbally and physically abused me. The abuse at times even occurred right in front of our kids. It became too much and I didn't want to continue living that way. I wanted a change and I wanted better for not only myself, but for my kids. And I knew that God had better for me. At the age of 21, I made a decision to move to Dallas, Georgia, and it was the best decision, one of the best decisions that I made in my life. I moved down here without nothing, not even $100 to my name, but I trusted God. I was able to get an apartment over in Dallas Housing Authority. I thank God for the women over there, Shirley and Vicky, them, and I thank God for Ms. Lou and Mr. Dave Carmichael. But during that time, I reached out because I was tired of what I was going through and even tired of what I had witnessed in my own life. And I reached out to Shepherd's Rest. And at that time, I had the pleasure of speaking to Ms. Catherine. I'll never forget what you told me that day in our process of conversation and this was after days of me calling. You told me that if he did it before, that he'll do it again and that I deserve better. It was at that moment, Ms. Catherine, that I felt like I had a way out. I got a protective order and within six months, I was divorced from that man. That decision changed my life for the better and I now stand before you as an overcomer. To Ms. Catherine, I believe that God put you in my path for a reason. Thank you for your tireless efforts and being a catalyst for change in the lives of women and children. Thank you for serving our community. Thank you for making a difference in my life. There's a song that I'm reminded of and it's feeling for you, Ms. Catherine, and for all of you who serve in our communities. If I can help somebody as I pass along, if I can cheer somebody with a word or a song, if I can show somebody he is traveling wrong, then my living shall not be in vain. I say to you, Ms. Catherine, that I stand here because of you and the countless of others that stop to help me along the way.
Darmita mentioned a lady named Lou and she's in the audience today and on Thursday, we will have been married 43 years.[1568.71][1568.71][applause] And finally, an announcement that has just come up this morning that we want to make you aware of and I'll ask Ms. Lori Ashmore to come back up and I'm going to take my regular seat and you can tell everybody what's going on there.
We all know about how cold it was this weekend. The water system was not immune to the temperature issues and the snowfall that we had. On Sunday, we were alerted to a problem out in Union area of Pauling County in the southwest corner when we started receiving phone calls of low water pressure. There were some incorrect reports of a main break or a... There was a fire hydrant that had been hit, but in fact, one of the sensors on the tank was indicating that the tank was frozen, indicating that the tank was full and the tank levels had actually been dropping. When we initiated repair efforts to get the sensor not controlling the tank and the booster pump station on to fill it, the booster pump station is not presently filling the tank. We are working diligently to locate the source of the issue and get it corrected and restore service to both Union and Yorkville as soon as possible. The low pressure situation that we have in the western part of the county does require a boil water advisory and out of an abundance of caution, when we restore service, we will have to sample the water, run microbiological tests on it, and report those to the state. The tests themselves take about 24 hours for us to get the results. So just to give you an idea of that, we have worked with the school system, the fire department, EMA. Everyone has been very good about helping us get the word out and be prepared for that low pressure situation that we have. We've had news media coverage. It's on our website as well as several of the Facebook pages for EMA and for the Sheriff's Department. So we're getting the word out to all of the affected residents. Last night, we expanded our normal dispatch center. We normally have one person running, answering the phones in the evening. Last night, we had six. So we were taking a number of phone calls. We have about 3,900 customers that are affected in this area. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Not to put you on the spot, but we talked late last night. We know it's not going to be fixed right this second. We know it's going to take a little while and when it does get repaired, it's going to take a little while to fill those tanks. it's going to take a little while to fill those tanks. Um, so we could be looking at the earliest, and, and you can stop me, tomorrow evening would be the earliest.
That's correct.
We're, we're looking at, um, so if you get, anybody gets phone calls or Facebook or whatever, um, we're not looking at having water pressure to everybody until late tomorrow evening at the earliest. You have to be realistic. Um, I had somebody call this morning and that's all I did yesterday is filled those calls along with, I have to thank Lori and the water department and the extra people that you put filling calls and I know that people didn't always get the right answer that they wanted. Um, but sometimes you have to, you just have to shoot people straight and, and let them know. So this morning's phone call was about a fellow that has quite a bit of livestock and it, basically what I told him was, I said, "You, you need to start toting water and you're going to need to do that today and tomorrow and hopefully, you know, Thursday morning can be a different story." But, um, am I correct somewhat?
It's, it, timetable is variable.
We're not sure.
We're not, until we have the, until we have the, the direct cause.
Right.
Of that pump station not pumping, not filling that tank.
Right.
I can't give you a, I can't give you a definite timetable. But you're correct. It's after we, after we repair, it will take time.
It takes some time.
For us to re-pressurize the system.
And my point-
And we have to go through Union and Yorkville.
Yorkville.
In order to get there.
Exactly. And my point is that, um, we don't need people thinking that we're going to get this fixed today and they're going to have water today. So today's not going to happen, tomorrow's not going to happen. We're praying for tomorrow night and we'll just have to see what happens. And we, my statements may be wrong, um, but sometimes when people know when it's not going to happen, they can deal with the situation. And, and I guess that's what I'm saying.
And we will put, and we will put updates out as we have information to, to share. We will put it out on our webpage. We will also make sure that, um, that we've got it to others who have posted to their Facebook.
Okay. And I'd like to thank our, all of our people, sheriff's department, fire department, our water department. When, you know, I guess twenty-four hours without power, you kind of deal with it and you get the family together and you think you're camping and this is okay and everything's fun. The next twenty-four hours, it's not too fun and after that, it's just miserable. It's, is exactly what it is. So a lot of these folks got power back on, hoping to get warm water and then couldn't get water. So, um, a couple of folks kind of chuckled about boil water advisory. I don't have any water to boil and we recognize that. Uh, but we've had people working around the clock in the water department, out in the field, and we'll continue to do that until we get that thing up and going, correct?
That's correct.
And I think you're running on not a whole lot of sleep yourself.
That's correct.
Um, so keep running. As I told Frank, put your tennis shoes on, keep running and, uh, but we thank you for your work and, uh, thank everybody in the county, uh, for all their work the last three or four days, DOT, everybody, all of our departments. And, uh, it's good to see a community come together. Sometimes, uh, things like that bring neighbors together and neighbors helping neighbors. So thank everybody, thank the citizens and, uh, let's all say a prayer for some water.
Thanks Lori. And I know she wants to be recognized, elected official at, at school board, Ms. Kim Cobb. Thank you for being here, Kim. Under, uh, let's see, we have no invited guests. Uh, under bid awards, number one, discuss action to approve a bid award for the relocation of water line, uh, of the water line four, State Route ninety-two to the low bidder Mid-South Builders Incorporated in the amount of seven million, four hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. Ms. Pollard, you're going to be up there for a while, right?
Uh, I think so. I'm going to try to be short on all of them. So we received seven bids. The bids ranged from seven point, point four million to eleven point one million. These have been, um, reviewed by the engineering staff and they've agreed that the seven point four million is a sufficient bid and so they're recommending awards to the low bidder, Mid-South Builders. If you will recall, last week you received, um, you also approved reimbursement request or reimbursement, um, from G-DI for a portion of this expense. To relocate ninety-two.
Any questions? Bid award number two, discuss action to award a purchase of headworks equipment for the copper mine plants to the low bidder Parks Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Um, this is being requested to award to the low bidder. However, it was, uh, the firms were evaluated on a ratings criteria, so looked at cost, experience, ability to meet design requirements, um, available, availability of replacement parts and delivery schedule. And it just so happens that it comes out to Parks Incorporated, also to the low bid, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. And this will replace some of the screens at the, um, copper mine water facilities that are, that are currently filling.
That's something we've been working on, a little bit at a time.
Yes, sir. These, these are purchased as part of our copper mine headworks improvements. Uh, we'll be following this with a construction contractor award, uh, in the, in the upcoming months. The reason we've brought this to you as a separate package is so that we can expedite schedule. We can cut approximately two months off of our, uh, estimated time to complete if we go ahead and pre, get this equipment purchase, um, under contract and then the contractor will be the one to accept delivery and get, make, get it installed.
Okay. Thank you.
There Russell in the audience, you looking forward to getting this?
Yes, sir.
Bid, uh, award number three, discuss action to approve the budgeted purchase, purchase of a mini excavator to the lowest responsive bidder, Bobcat of Atlanta, in the amount of fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
The next three items were approved in the budget process and since that time, fleet along with the departments have solicited quotes or went to state contract to make purchase this one. We had five quotes ranging from fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars to sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine. Um, primary difference is the brand of equipment. Um, they were all spec similarly and they're recommending awards to the low bid, Bobcat of Atlanta, um, in the amount of fifty-two, seven hundred and thirty-seven.
Bid award number four, discuss action to approve the budgeted purchase of a Caterpillar D-six track type tractor, uh, to Yancey Brothers Company in the amount of two hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
Um, if you recall, we talked about, during the budget process, we talked about several different, um, changes and things, items that needed to be purchased for the landfill and this is, uh, one of those items. Since that time, it has stopped operating completely and so they have gone out to the state contract to obtain pricing through Yancey, for Yancey Brothers in the amount of two eighty-three, nine fifty-four.
Bid award number five, discuss action to approve the budgeted purchase of a four-thousand gallon water tank truck to Peach State Freightliner in the amount of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Again, this was the budgeted item that's requested from the, um, fleet off of the, uh, state contract pricing and the budgeted amount was one hundred and forty-five thousand, so it's a little less than, than the budgeted amount.
Bid award number six, discuss action to award the comprehensive recreation park, green space and trails master plan to Barge Wagner, Sumner and Cannon Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand, five hundred dollars.
Um, over the past couple of years, we've done several comp plans. This will be an, this will be a comprehensive plan for the recreation system. So it will, um, take into, it'll take public input and evaluate all of our parks to see what needs are, um, how we could best spend our splosh dollars to meet the needs of the ci, of the citizens in the recreation area. And, um, this was put together in a, a selection committee, evaluated the, um, the proposals and they conducted interviews and, um, after the completion of that process, it was recommended award, um, to Barge Wagner, Sumner and Cannon in the amount of one hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Dave, you and I were a part of that. And that was, I think, uh, this is long overdue in our recreation department and it'll help us today and plan for the future and plan for a future splosh. So I'm looking forward to that. We did have quite a, quite a few people on that selection committee. So thank you all, everybody that participated.
And finally, bid award number seven, discuss action to award the East Memorial Drive at State Route sixty-one right turn lane project in the city limits of Dallas to the low bidder, A1 Contracting LLC in the amount of three hundred and ninety-two thousand.
We had three participants. The bids ranged from three hundred and ninety-two thousand to six hundred and thirty thousand and, uh, DOT has reviewed that low bid and they are recommending that we award to the low bid.
The city of Dallas is going to appreciate that greatly and, um, seemed like all of, it seemed like a lot of money here, but it seemed like all of it came in under bid. I mean, I'm sorry, underestimated.
Most of it then came in underestimated.
Thanks, Tabitha. Under reports from committees and departments, uh, we can still call them New, New County Administrator, Mr. Frank Baker and Sergeant Ashley Hinson are going to update us on the Paulding County Superior Court Alcohol and Drug Awareness Program. It's done so much already for Paulding County.
Uh, good morning. I appreciate the time to, to address you, uh, on this issue. And I appreciate my colleague, Sergeant Ashley Hinson coming up and, uh, talking with us also. Uh, this is a program that I had founded when I was back, um, working in Cobb County before I retired. I had done about forty-two of these programs over there. And so when, when I came over here, um, the Superior Court, uh, was very interested in me trying to get this program going. And so, um, a couple of weeks ago, we just completed our thirteenth program at Hal Hudgens' Elementary School. And the significance of the program itself is, um, when you, when you put a total number of students that you provide this to, it's kind of amazing. So we've, we, we are at about fourteen thousand students that have gone through this program since we started, um, which I think is incredible if you look at the total number of students in our school system. Uh, for those of you who don't know about the program, just real briefly, it's a comprehensive K through twelve program that we do, um, in connection with, um, a lot of different county departments. For example, the sheriff's office, um, the Board of Education, um, the Board of Commissioners and, um, finance and so on. Everybody's involved in this program, so it's, it's a collaborative effort to do it. But what we do is, uh, we work with three schools a year, which are selected by the, um, Board of Education. And we provide a program, an all-day program for an elementary school, a middle school and a high school for that calendar year, that school year. And so we, uh, we've got two more scheduled for the end of the year, our middle school and our high school. Uh, and that will round out all of the high schools, uh, since we started the program. So then we can start again. And just a side note, um, this was one of the areas where Judge Beavers, uh, was really concerned about me coming over and working for y'all. He wanted his program to continue because, uh, he's put a lot of effort in making sure that we, we've done this. So I, I pledged to him that I would continue to do everything I could do to make sure that it continues. I'm working with the new court administrator over there to, to help with it. It's, it's a pretty elaborate, uh, setup. Uh, it is a, it's a production, actually. Uh, not just a, a speaker, but it's a, a series of acts and, um, and production elements that are, uh, put together in, in, in the form of, uh, the whole school day for the entire school. So it's one of the things I'd like to continue to do if I can. Uh, and I'll just have to work a little bit quicker with my track shoes on, but, um, we appreciate Ashley. A lot of people behind the scenes have helped, uh, us put this thing together. Uh, Dr. Brian O'Tott, our new, um, superintendent of schools, has been an integral part of it, as, as did Cliff Cole before he retired. Uh, and, and again, just various, uh, folks, uh, the sheriff himself, our fire chief and all his folks have helped out. And then we have some folks, um, from outside the county, uh, Georgia State Patrol has helped us out quite a bit, uh, Metro Ambulance Service, and it goes on and on and on. So it's a, if you haven't been to one of these things, I encourage you to try to come. Uh, I'd be happy to have you come out to, to those. But I'm going to turn it over to Ashley for some words from the sheriff's office.
Good morning. How are y'all?
Good morning.
Good deal. Uh, you know, Frank pretty much said it all, uh, but from the sheriff's office perspective, um, and many of you have been there, uh, at these events. Fourteen thousand kids, that's a lot of folks that we have impacted. Uh, so you think about that, each kid's got probably at least one or two parents, um, and they go home and talk about this or a sibling. So you think about the impact and the, and the reach that we have with this program. Um, and I think it's extremely important now that, now that Frank's the county administrator, having the Board of Commissioners officially on board, uh, because you've got all the major stakeholders in place now. You've got the Board of Education, you've got the County Board of Commissioners, the Superior Court, plus you've got your public safety entities. So these are all the important stakeholders that are going to have an impact on these kids' lives. So some of these kids, these are, you know, all types of kids. So if, if we can impact at least one or two of these kids in each one of these programs, then we've done something. And so I just applaud Frank and everything that he's done over the past several years for getting this program going and thank you to the Board of Commissioners for continuing him, or allowing him to work with this program because it is very beneficial. Um, this is something I've been to, I've been to every one of them. I've had the opportunity to, uh, to be a host for every one of these events and it's just, uh, it's a huge thing for our children and our county. So thank you to you, Frank, and, and everyone that's been involved. It's a really good, uh, program and very important for our, our students.
Thank you all for, Frank, thanks for your work. I've had the opportunity to go to two of them and, um, it's pretty eye-opening and that it really makes a huge positive impact on our children and, uh, it really makes you think about life and how fast it can happen. And, uh, so I appreciate it. And it is, it's a production. If anybody has the opportunity to go, you ought to take the, take the day and, and, and go there with your child if you can work that out because it's, it's unbelievable. And it, when you walk out of there, it, it just opens your eyes. It's, it really makes you thankful for, for your family and who you have and, and I guess it puts a different perspective on, on things.
Yeah, I've only been to two, but I just echo what Commissioner Poundell said, that they, they're very well done. They're entertaining, they're, they're fun to be at. And they're at the kids' level, you know, so I just appreciate it.
Which is at our level.
All right. Public participation agenda items, we have no one who's signed up, uh, this morning. Um, under consent agenda, it's long, uh, I'm required to read it. I can send agenda item number one is approve the twenty-eighteen Paulding County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting Schedule, uh, that is available online and I guess in the back of the room. It's pretty normal, uh, second and fourth Tuesdays, except in early summer, uh, in June, uh, there's one different date and then, uh, during the September fall break, we meet on a Thursday rather than a Tuesday. Number two, approve amendment, uh, number one, uh, to joint funding agreement, number one-six E S N T G zero zero zero, zero zero zero, zero-two with U S G S for monitoring in Richland Creek. And number three is adopt resolution seventeen dash forty-one, uh, the resolution amending the Paulding County Street Light Ordinance, uh, section one oh one to one twenty of the Paulding County Code of Ordinances. Number four is approve the memorial designation of a portion of Ridge Road between Billerica Highway and Dallas-Neebo Road, Baker's Bridge Road located in post two. And number five is to approve the renewal of the existing contract service agreement for the Paulding Kiosk Program. Number six, to approve the proposed application and public hearing dates for the planning, commission, uh, the zoning board of appeals, the stream buffer development waiver review committee and the development waiver review committee for the twenty-eighteen calendar year. Number seven is, uh, the, uh, renewal of the animal control hearing board. Um, let's see if I get the right copy here. Um, Ms. Lynn Jackson from, nominated for the chairman and, uh, Ms. Jessica Gullett from post one commissioner, Commissioner Davis. Item number eight, uh, cemetery preservation commission to, oh, yeah, Wendy Hill in post four.
Window Hill.
Wendell.
Wendy Hall. Hall. Hall, isn't it?
Yeah. Wendell Hall.
It's that hill.
You read it right.
Yeah.
I'm reading that way, and I apologize.
Okay. Then number eight, the Cemetery Preservation Commission to reappoint with the term ending of December thirty-first, twenty-eighteen, Mr. Todd Tibbetts from the chairman, Ms. Kathy Bookout from post three commissioner, and Mr. Van Westbrook from post four commissioner. Number nine, Fire Advisory Board, reappointing the term ending of December thirty-first, twenty-eighteen, Emory Gordy from the chairman, Donald Sharon from post one, Randy Richard from post two, Buddy Harrelson from post three. And item number ten is Planning and Zoning Commission, reappoint with the term ending of December thirty-first, twenty-eighteen, Mr. Harold Stokes from the chairman, Mr. Chris Wheeler from post one, Mr. Alan Hornback from post two, Mr. Roger Leggett from post three. And then, well, that's all that pertains to Board of Commissioners. Item number eleven, the Water Sewer Advisory Board to reappoint with the term ending of December thirty-first, twenty-eighteen, Bobby Maddox from the chairman, David Barnett from the chairman, Carlton Rixoff from the chairman, Jeremiah Fields from post one, Michael Creighton from post two, Jim Smith from post three, Wayne Kirby from post four. Under the Zoning Board of Appeals, to reappoint with the term ending of December thirty-first, twenty-eighteen, Lamar Clark from the chairman, and George Schill from post three. And, and Ms. Deborah Seaver, post four commissioner. Consent agenda number thirteen, adopt resolution seventeen dash forty-two, reappointing Johnny McBurroughs and Arthur L. Forbright to the Pauling County Board of Assessors for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Number fourteen, reappoint Jenna Barton to the Pauling County Library Board of Trustees to serve a three-year term from July first, twenty-seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. And under the Keep Pauling Beautiful Board, reappointing a three-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, Judge Sewell from post one, and Ms. Nancy Hightower from post three. Let, let me just say that, you know, you see some vacant positions here, and some of the boards don't meet very frequently. So they're the ones that, we have some additional time to fill in those vacancies, and the Board of Commissioners will be continuing to work on that to get interested and responsible people there. Number sixteen, reappoint David Small to the Pauling County Airport Authority with a term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, and reappoint Mr. Ellis Aston in, to the Pauling County Airport Authority with a term ending December thirty-first, twenty-eighteen. Number eighteen, reappoint Peggy Wills and George McFadden to the Pauling County Board of Elections with a term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. And the Recreation Commission Board is reappointing with a five-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, Mr. Ben Paris from post one, and Gene Allen from post two. Number twenty is appoint Greg Perry and Deena Sanfilippo to the Board of Ethics for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen. And number twenty-one is declare these items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through action of trade. The Sheriff's Department Car Unit Forty-nine, two thousand and four Ford C V, serial number two F A F P seven-one W twenty-four X one-one six zero two four, Sheriff's Car Unit S seventy, two thousand and five, Ford Crown Vic is two F A F P seven-one W one-five X one-three-four four-one-eight. And under the DOT Department Truck Unit one-fourteen, a two thousand and four F one fifty, serial number two F T R F one-eight-two-two, C A one-four-nine-three-five, and finally, another DOT Department Vehicle Truck Unit seventy-five, a nineteen ninety-four Ford F one fifty, serial number one F T E F one-five N seven R N A seven-two-seven-five-zero. Are there any of these consent agenda items that any of the commissioners would like to place on the regular business, under regular business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd either like to have number twenty split in two separate votes on the irregular agenda. For the appointment to the Board of Ethics.
Okay.
So Commissioner Colette would like to separate twenty into the two individuals listed. To separate those, it'll be two consent agenda items rather than one, and we'll discuss it.
Do you want them on the regular agenda? So items six and seven is what you, is that what you're asking?
That's correct. Because that's the only way to vote separately on them.
Okay. So item six would be, hold on. Item six would be Greg Perry, and then item seven would be Ms. Sanfilippo. Is that what you're asking?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you understand?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to remove number thirteen and put it on the irregular agenda and do the same.
Okay. Discuss that on the new business. Your moment, sir.
So that would be six, seven, eight, and nine? Is that what you're trying to do?
Yes, please. Any others?
I'd just like to say that getting those names in place and, and all of that consent agenda was a, we'll call it a labor of love for Rebecca. So Rebecca, thank you for your dedication to getting that in order for today's meeting.
Yes, thank you.
And there are, there will be others on here for January ninth. So we had some last-minute moves.
I had an email from Rebecca after eleven o'clock last night. Okay. We'll move on to old business. And under old business item number one, there's going to change, which I'm going to defer to Ms. Skipper to explain it better than I will.
You recall you had an appeal from last month that was an appeal from a decision of the Development Waiver Review Committee on an application by Ansley Capital Partners. The appealing party was an adjoining property owner, Mr. Gilbert. Mr. Gilbert has sent, sent an email asking to withdraw his appeal, which means that this is on here for old business, that it does not, no longer requires a vote from this board, so it will not be on this afternoon. I've left it on here more for announcement purposes to bet y'all would understand that the person who appealed has withdrawn the appeal, so the Development Waiver Review Committee decision would stand. So there is no longer an appeal. I liken it to a court case. The court case was dismissed, so there's no reason for the judge, which would be y'all, to make a decision. That's essentially what's happened. There's nothing pending before you any longer. So for informational purposes, what would happen next is this would go to the EPD, because that was actually the next step, was that Ansley Partners has to apply to the EPD to see whether or not they're going to approve this system.
I'd like to-
Lori can add if she wants to.
Do you need to add? Okay. I'm going to make a couple of statements concerning this. I was the one that felt like we needed to table this at the last meeting because we needed more information. I think that information has come to light. And so I'm going to make a statement concerning it. And if anybody else would like to join in, agree or disagree, that's fine. We didn't have all the information maybe we needed at the last meeting in order to make the decision that needs to be made one way or another. And I feel like the decision to table it until this meeting was the right decision. With that said, I'm not for doing anything that's going to put the county in a spot where the county's going to be liable or spending money down the road, whether down the road's tomorrow, five years, ten years, or twenty years. I don't want to put the county in a spot where we've got to do something. I don't feel like the system that's recommended to be put out there is the correct system, not only for the county. I don't feel like that, that system is the correct system for the homeowners that are not there at this point that will be buying in the future. And I feel like it's something that will come back to the county one way or another, and we're always the one that has, has to end up fixing it. And I want anybody that's looking at a system like that to be aware of that. And I'll just, I'll just stop there and love to hear anything else you've got to say.
Well, I could, I agree with Commissioner Poundell. We have an ordinance that says that we won't do this, so this is a variance. The reason we have that ordinance is a good reason. This is something that I feel as a county we should not be getting into. If this goes through, this is something that will come back, in my opinion, to the taxpayers, not if it will, but when it will. And the taxpayers will have to probably pick up the cost of this if this is a failed project.
And if this goes through the way it's going to go, we, we at this point have, don't have, as commissioners, don't have a whole lot to say so about it. We don't have a lot of input. That'll be up to the state, so. But like Vernon said and Todd has said, we have an ordinance that prevents this type of system being put in. So hopefully, we'll hear from that later.
I'll chime in and state that I agree with the commissioners who have spoken on this. I feel it's a dangerous situation, a county into handling systems like this. So I think that the, the policy in place is there for good reason.
Okay. Then old business number one becomes discuss action to approve a professional services agreement with Jay Glenn Richardson to continue counsel service for the Pauling County Tax Assessors Department. This was tabled from November fourteenth, twenty-seventeen, at the Board of Commissioners' meeting. And we have Mr. Stokes here as the chief tax assessor to help us understand the need for this position and to give us additional information. James, thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen. We have an ongoing agreement with Glenn Richardson to represent the Pauling County Board of Tax Assessors in all appeals that we have that get forwarded on the Superior Court. Over the last twelve months, in all honesty, we haven't really sent that much over there. We haven't had a lot of appeals from our twenty-seventeen digest. We do have some. We currently have two that are multiple-years appeals that have already been scheduled in Superior Court. The Board of Assessors have reviewed the contract. It's identical to what you gentlemen agreed to last year. This will continue our track and hopefully resolve a lot of our appeals rather than going out and searching for new counsel. So the Board of Assessors has recommended to go another twelve months with Mr. Richardson. Of course, it's, it's up to your consideration. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to speak with you. I know I spoke with one or two of you, and so if you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them.
Well, I appreciate you being here, James, because you really don't have to be. You're, you're in your own department as assessors, but you think enough of our unity in the county that you bring it forward, so I appreciate you bringing it to us. When you mentioned seeking other counsel, has any other counsel been sought out as far as a comparative analysis?
I have put out questions for several counties' tax assessors because not very many attorneys deal in ad rule and taxation. So I have not heard back the last time that we reviewed this contract. It was viewed to be a very competitive pricing. I know what other, the attorneys representing the other parties, what they are charging, which is this rate is significantly less than what opposing counsel is. I think Ms. Skipper has reviewed the contract, and, you know, that's really all we have to say about it.
Let me ask you this. If, if it comes to a vote at the two o'clock meeting, you've got on there twelve months. If we needed to do ninety days, you'd be okay with that to get us through and we'll see from there?
I do not think ninety days would be long enough.
Okay. So you probably need to talk to me then?
Yes, if that's the case, yes.
Okay. We had talked on the phone, and, and I know we have a couple of things going up on, I think, January thirty-first.
Correct.
And so I want to see some things through, but, so I'll be here.
And with that inquiry, what position will that put us in as a county if, at the two o'clock meeting, Mr. Richardson is not approved? What position will that put us in for coming months?
That's probably going to be a question for Ms. Skipper. In, in my opinion, we would have to put a stay on all of our pending cases. Now, we would have to seek new counsel, and we would have to start bringing up the, whoever is chosen. We'd have to bring them up on all of our pending cases. So you could push it out.
In the interim, it would revert to me, effectively, is what would happen, and then we would work through what we're going to do.
Questions, comments?
Well, I know you- Go ahead. I'll follow up.
We, this board took action to sever a relationship with Tally Richardson Cable earlier this year.
Correct.
And after that, you, you came to us and asked if we would consider extending this. Mr. Richardson, I guess, is not legally a partner in that firm. His name's on the building, and he works out of there, but he's not part of that firm.
Correct.
One of the reasons that we, that we were discussing that was because Mr. Richardson was in the middle of a lot of, he was right in the middle of the appeals season, I guess, for lack of a better term. And you wanted time for him to finish, finish what he was doing and close up that stuff for the end of the year. And you mentioned a couple of cases that are multi-year, and I think we've all seen those before. Have the others been cleaned up? Has he wrapped up the rest of those?
Yes. And the same parties have appealed again.
Right.
So we've added another here.
Well, thank you.
All right, thanks. Thanks, James.
Move on to new business. Discuss action to authorize the chairman to approve the purchase of stream and wetland mitigation credits for the Swan Drive Range Improvement Project from Whipping Creek Meadows LLC in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty cents. Mr. Jones.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Essentially, this is in relation to the replacement of the Swan Drive culvert projects out there. As part of the proposed work for the projects, the land being disturbed will approach upon designated wetlands and stream banks. The Army Corps of Engineers has determined that the project has impacted zero-point-seven acres of wetland and one thousand twenty-seven feet of stream bank. Due to this unavoidable land disturbance, we are required by law to somehow mitigate the impacts of the disturbance. Purchasing stream bank and wetland mitigation credits is the typical method to handle that type of disturbance. The cost for these credits is fifty-six thousand, I'm sorry, fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty cents. If anybody has any questions regarding this process, I can answer them.
I don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business item number two, discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement with Heath and Lineback Engineers Incorporated for the engineering- dollars, for a one-year period with the option to renew upon approval of additional funding. Services will be used for preliminary engineering of transportation splosh projects. Backup, all right?
I'm not gonna sit back down again. All right. Essentially, this agenda item is to provide for engineering services for our roadway projects. With the current amount of projects ongoing in the future, we do not have the necessary staff available to handle all the engineering activities. Additionally, having a consultant like Heath and Lineback allows our department to handle, allows our department to provide expertise in certain specialty areas where we do not have that type of capability, such as bridge design, ecology, environmental. This is a continuation of a contract that our department had with Heath and Lineback. Starting last year, we've been satisfied with the results so far and the efforts produced by Heath and Lineback, and we recommend that this contract be awarded to continue the progress of our engineering department. The contract is an amount of five hundred thousand dollars. The invoicing of the consultant services is based on a per-hour billing provided to each project. If any questions, again, I can answer them.
I've read all the backup, but Georgia, Heath and Lineback, we used them before on this type of problem?
Yes, sir, we've used them on multiple projects. They're probably one of the top consultants we have. They're very responsive, they have very solid engineering design. I'd say they're, they're a top-notch firm.
Okay. We'll move to number three, discuss action to authorize the Chairman to enter into a contract with Trans Systems Corporation in the amount of two million, five hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighteen cents, for preliminary engineering design services for the Cedar Crest Road Widening Project from Harmony Grove Church Road to the Cobb County Line.
Essentially, this is preliminary engineering for roadway construction plans for Cedar Crest Road, again, from the Cobb County Line to Harmony Grove Church Road. Cedar Crest Road is the third highest-traveled road in the county, with up to fifteen thousand five hundred cars on certain sections of that road. Cedar Crest, right now, as you all know, is currently a two-lane road. To accommodate current and future projected traffic, a four-lane roadway project is needed to move traffic efficiently and safely. The project will tie into the Cobb County portion of Cedar Crest Road that is currently being widened to four lanes. We recommend awarding to Trans Systems due to their work experience with Paulding County, qualifications, and knowledge of personnel, the quality of their work, and familiarity with the project. We have used Trans Systems on multiple road and bridge projects in the county in the past, and have been extremely pleased with their design work. Many of the key personnel on the Trans Systems team, Trans Systems team, were a part of the engineering team that was used by Cobb County for their section of the road widening. The project is estimated to cost two million, five hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and has a projected twenty-one-month design schedule to bid for construction once the notice to proceed is issued. Again, I can answer any questions, if there are any.
So it'll match up with the Cobb County improvement that's in progress right there?
Yes, sir, exactly. We'll provide a four-lane section all the way from Cobb Parkway down to Harmony Grove Church Road. The other part of Cedar Crest Road from Ninety-two, basically to Seven Hills, is another project area that will be in the future, scheduled to be widened.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
New business number four, discuss action to adopt Resolution seventeen dash forty-three, naming Frank Baker, County Administrator, as the ACCG, Association of County Commissioners of Georgia County Legislative Coordinator for Paulding County. And I actually don't have Resolution seventeen forty-three here, but what it is, is just a point of contact for legislative changes and updates on a day-to-day basis that might come during the General Assembly, which will kick off here in January, to allow us to be on top of any developments. So Mr. Baker would be that single point of contact that ACCG would reach out to. That's what the resolution says, just don't have a copy of it. I can read it this afternoon.
I've got it, if you want me to read it. It's not very long, yeah, I can read it. "Whereas legislative decisions by the Georgia General Assembly increasingly impact county governments, and whereas ACCG monitors and reports on legislative proposals on a regular basis during and after each legislative session, and whereas ACCG regularly seeks input and comment from county officials and staff in assessing the impact of legislative proposals and in developing responses to such proposals, and whereas to ensure an effective and accurate response, there must be a process whereby reports from ACCG and requests from ACCG for information or analysis of legislative proposals are directed to the most appropriate county officials or staff for response, and whereas counties are most effective when they communicate directly with their legislative delegation. Now therefore, be it resolved to most effectively respond to legislative proposals affecting counties, there shall be one county official or staff person designated by the Board of Commissioners to serve as the County Legislative Coordinator, CLC, for Paulding County. Be it further resolved that the CLC for Paulding County shall have the following: one, access to all department heads and county officials to obtain information and data; two, access to the members of the Board of Commissioners; three, working knowledge of county operations; four, the ability and time to respond to requests for information from ACCG policy staff in a timely manner; five, authority within the county government structure to request and receive timely responses to requests for information; six, knowledge of the various departments within the county and the points of contact within each to obtain information and feedback; seven, ability to provide periodic reports to the members of the Board of Commissioners and other county officials regarding legislative reports and activities of ACCG; and eight, ability to coordinate the county's feedback directly with its legislative delegation. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners hereby designate Frank Baker to serve as the CLC for Paulding County, and until further notice. Be it further resolved that notice of disappointment shall be immediately transmitted to the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia."
New business item number five. Discuss action to approve the Chairman's nomination of George Jones as the Paulding County Department of Transportation Director. So, I'm very excited that, in speaking with George yesterday, that he has agreed to accept his position and take on the tremendous responsibility involved in running this county's highway system, traffic lights and, you know, everything. We have sixty employees, seventy employees, a filed million-dollar budget, almost more than that.
Nine?
Yeah.
So... Are you already taking money away from him? He's not even been voted in.
And you picked quite the weekend to offer him that job. He's been working all weekend out there.
Don't mind getting your feet wet.
Another one, I know Saturday night he got two hours of sleep. You know, we, we have all spoken with one another about Mr. Jones, his already contributions to Paulding County, and his extremely successful productivity for Paulding County, so it was an easy choice to nominate him, and it's a pleasure to nominate George. Any other comments?
I'm looking forward to it. Scott says he's better than Scott.
Yeah.
I mean, that came from Scott. What he said.
I'm not gonna really say anything to that.
Anyway.
Okay, new business item number six is to adopt Resolution seventeen dash forty-two, reappointing Johnny McBurroughs and Arthur...
Um, okay, so, yeah, I'll do it. Six is going to be to appoint Greg Perry to the Board of Ethics for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. I'm gonna read them all so it makes sense. Seven is going to be to appoint Dina Sanz-Lipa to the Board of Ethics for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Eight, I've been trying to figure out how to do this, so I think that it's gonna make sense to fit, adopt Resolution seventeen dash forty-two A, reappointing Johnny McBurroughs to the Paulding County Board of Assessors for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty. And then item number nine is gonna be adopt Resolution seventeen forty-two B, and we're just gonna have to split that, reappointing Arthur Fulbright to the Paulding County Board of Assessors for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty. I understood that you wanted to separate it out into four votes, is that right?
That sounds good.
Okay, so seventeen forty-two A and B will be eight and nine. Does that make sense? I can fix it later. Yep.
All right, so...
So six is Mr. Perry.
So appoint Greg Perry to the Board of Ethics for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. The, the assignment of a Board of Ethics, or the availability of a Board of Ethics is one of our, one of the requirements that we're supposed to have as a county, and it's, you know, several of the boards have been kind of inactive, this is another one that's been active, but this is one that you want to be inactive. But as the, as the Chairman, it's my responsibility to nominate two people, and then they pick a third person who's a local Paulding County attorney, and that makes up this Board of Ethics. But that's, that's more generally about the Board of Ethics. Greg Perry is the owner and manager of Family Insurance here locally, has served in some positions of leadership, so that's why I nominated him. Any discussion?
Then item seven would be Ms. Sanz-Lipa for the same board, and the same term, through December thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
Okay, and Dina is often in the audience and has been active in Paulding County government. She actually worked for the county for a while, well, she's, I don't have her bio in front of me, but very well-educated, and actually has had experience in, in, in the field of ethical, I don't know, I should say ethical boards, but in, in the process of administration of ethics within public service organizations. She is somebody who wants to contribute to the county, and that's why I nominated her. Comments, discussion? Moving on to...
Eight would be adopt Resolution seventeen forty-two A, reappointing Johnny McBurroughs to the Paulding County Board of Assessors for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Any discussion on Mr. McBurroughs?
Then nine is gonna be adopt Resolution seventeen forty-two B, reappointing Arthur L. Fulbright to the Paulding County Board of Assessors for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty, as well.
Any discussion, comments on Mr. Fulbright?
No, thank you.
These will be separate items this afternoon, but, all right, that's the conclusion of our regular business. We do have executive session for personnel pending and potential litigation. We have public participation on non-agenda items. People have been patient in the audience here, and I would entertain a motion that we hear from these citizens before we adjourn into executive session.
I'll make a motion, we hear from the five citizens before we adjourn to executive session?
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Townill, second by Commissioner Davis. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we'll invite the citizens wishing to speak on the non-agenda item, which is the zoning stipulation in their area down near the Georgians. So, Mr. Morris, in whose group?
I'm gonna go Dan first, you're first.
Okay, I'll call Mr. Ken Strack up first then, to talk about right-of-way first. Dina, you here?
I've looked over the audience, and I, and I haven't seen him.
Okay.
All right, and you'll come back this afternoon, and then I'll call Mr. Tommy Morris to speak on application twenty seventeen dash thirteen dash Z.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I've sent some emails to you outlining some of the things I'll be talking about today, so I'll try not to repeat myself too much. You've received the results of an online petition that was in opposition to two seven, two oh seven, one seven, dash thirteen, dash Z, specifically about stipulation five being removed. The question today is whether the Board, later on today, will give proper weight to two hundred and sixty people who signed that petition, or accommodate a business that's had a history of non-compliance with ordinances. I wanna also talk about the Planning Commission meeting last week, some of the things that came up a week before last. Planning and zoning said that you could take out stipulation five to stipulation seven, and B two zoning would still protect the county's forest junk vehicles. But they also went on to say that stipulation five was in there to strengthen B two zoning. Now, there are differences between the wording of stipulation five and stipulation seven, and I've sent that to you, and I won't bore you with that again, but there are significant differences in those two. So, the question is, if we're going, if you're going to remove stipulation five, why would you want to remove something that strengthens B two zoning to protect the county and protect our neighborhoods? Why did the owner want the change and have stipulation five taken out? The owner passed out a leaflet during that meeting, and it basically said, there's been an oversight on one of the stipulations regarding overnight repairs. Stipulation five has nothing to do with overnight repairs. The problem has been that for several years, we have seen the overnight repairs turn into days, weeks, and even months, and that came out in the Planning Commission meeting as well. These vehicles are parked there in various stages of repair. During the meeting, the owner also stated that it didn't really make sense for him to buy junk vehicles anymore after cash for clunkers ended. And I went back and researched that, and cash for clunkers ended in two thousand and nine. This owner came to Paulding County, was approved in two thousand and thirteen, his business started in two thousand and fourteen, so five years after this, we had a business card, which has been provided to you on several occasions, and it states, "We buy junk vehicles with the highest prices paid any maker or model." To me, this seems like intent to get around something that this owner had already agreed to in stipulation five and seven, and also in B two zoning. So I hope you take that into consideration as you vote this afternoon. Two other auto repair shops are in our area. One, Andrews Auto, is quarter of a mile north of this present site that we're talking about, and Dallas Auto is about eight miles north of there. These are both locally-owned auto parts or auto repair shops, just as the one is in question at eighty-nine oh five Villarica Highway. The county describes Highway sixty-one, and this is in the corridor, as an area with new developments, and the corridor will encourage development in this area to protect a uniform, high-quality appearance. This is significantly different than what we've heard about Hardy Chevrolet in that meeting. The Chairman of the Planning Commission mentioned on at least two occasions that with the highway corridor, you're supposed to have aesthetically pleasing views to those who are driving by. The corridor overlay district, and this is the intent, these standards are further intended to promote the public health, safety, and welfare. That's in the, in the guidelines there. One of the Planning Commission members stated the fence could have been, that a problem could be fixed by installing a fence. There's been a fence behind this building since two thousand and fourteen. The problem is, things are... The problem is things are not parked back there according to B2, which says that everything must be conducted entirely within a fully enclosed building or behind a six-foot privacy fence with supplies, equipment, inventory. And we have notified the county on many occasions about these non-compliance issues. We've furnished copies of the card. We've worked with our post commissioner. We have, this has been made known all this time. In summary, no one is opposed of business being open. We want business in the area to be successful, but also believe the ordinances should be followed by all. That has not been the case with this business. We are greatly concerned removing stipulation five would be a signal that B2 zoning has been weakened. Please vote no on removing stipulation.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. And the next I'll call Ms. Banks up to speak also on application 2017-13-Z.
Thank you and good morning, and thanks for letting me say a few words. Just wanted to let you know that in our New Georgia community, it is made up of homeowners and taxpayers who vote you all in, and a lot of our tax dollars come from our community. Our homes are our biggest investment and we don't want them to be devalued. And it's not a problem with having a small business. It's just the looks and the compliance concerns that concerns the area of where we live. And we'd just like to ask you to please consider our recommendations and not to pass vote on this. And I don't know if any of you have driven over to see what this place looks like, but if you hadn't, I'd like to see that you take a look at some of the things that Mr. Morris has presented to you. And I would just like to thank you again for letting me speak and just let you know that I think there would just be a bad impact to have a junkyard to look at. Like I said, a small business is one thing, but having a junkyard is another. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll call Mr. Williams to speak also on application 2017-13-Z.
Commissioners. 2017-13-Z is removing a stipulation from the permission for this business to operate. The business being Tom's Automotive Repair. He's an excellent repairman, but that's not the case in this removal of this stipulation. You know, it's pretty sad when county leaders want to diminish the appearance of their county rather than improve it. What is the advantage taken, gained by removing this stipulation? To allow the storage of vehicles that appear to be junk, maybe being worked on, but with the accumulation of 10 or 15 vehicles in front of this business, it appears to be a junk storage. Used vehicle junk is what it appears to be. But why would you want to remove the stipulation that allows detrimental appearance as we enter Paulding County? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, Mr. O'Neal, application 2017-13-Z.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'll keep my comments brief. At the last Board of Commissioners work session that I attended on November 14th, the board was unanimous in recognizing the progress that had remained in maintaining an attractive and welcoming environment in our county. There was a great deal of well-deserved praise for the people and organizations that contributed to that progress. In addition, Mr. Pennell stated, and I quote, "All of us working together, we can make Paulding County a great place to live, work, and play." And the bottom line is, when somebody comes in this county to buy a house, that's the first thing they see, good, bad, or indifferent, is the sides of our roads, and then they look deeper. And if they see trash, they don't look too deep and they leave. And working together, we can make a difference. Likewise, when somebody traveling up Highway 61 toward the Georgian, Merriweather Place, Trace Ridge, and other surrounding residential developments, the first thing they see approaching our neighborhoods is what is on the sides of our roads, good, bad, or indifferent. If they see a junkyard and a salvage business as close as a few hundred feet to the final turn into a subdivision, they don't look much deeper and they leave. Highway 61 is the southern gateway to Paulding County. Do we want a junkyard as a welcome center? New Georgia needs to attract restaurants, retail shops that cater to the large numbers of current and future homeowners, not industrial businesses such as an automotive junkyard, which are eyesores and polluters. All of you have received a copy of the petition and signatures, and I believe accompanying that were comments from some of the signers of the petition. And rather than go through all those and reiterate that, I'll focus on one that seems to consolidate the views of most of the folks that participated in that. I live close in the Georgian and don't want to see a junkyard every time I leave home and come home. No benefit for me. This type of business should not be this close to residential neighborhoods. In closing, let me ask, which of you would want a junkyard and salvage business located near the entrance of the place where you live and have a substantial financial investment? Commissioners, you asked the citizens of Paulding County to work together and make a difference to help make this county a great place to live, work, and play. Now the citizens are asking for your help to ensure that our part of the county remains a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you for the opportunity to present my concerns and the concerns of many other residents of New Georgia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neal.
Thank you.
I typically say at the start of these meetings that we appreciate your participation in county government, and I know better than to try to speak with these gentlemen up here. They're friends and I value their honest interest in what goes on in this county. But all of you in the audience, let me just say as we go into executive session that we do, all of us, appreciate your ideas and your thoughts on your county. And I can say that from a heart genuinely about these gentlemen that I share with on the board. At this time, we do need to go into executive session for personnel and pending litigations. I'll entertain a motion that we go into executive session.
I make a motion to go into executive. I make a motion that we go into executive session for personnel.
Potential litigation.
Potential litigation.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Collatt and a second by Commissioner Crowe.
That's personnel pending and potential.
Pending and potential litigation.
Litigation, the motion.
Lot of P's, isn't it? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will go into executive session at this time. I'll call the regular session of our Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and report that we took no action. We need a little bit of time to finalize the agenda for coming back to the two o'clock meeting. So we've agreed to convene at 2:30. I'm sorry to be in position to those of you that have already waited a long time, but honestly, we've got a lot of business to cover. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We apologize for that, too, because it's the only meeting we have in December and it was a long meeting. So we apologize for holding you guys up, but we'll be coming back at 2:30 for the two o'clock meeting. Okay? So I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Second. Motion is second. Can I adjourn? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stay adjourned until 2:30.